Agenda item one, moving to the agenda proper. Apologies for absence, I have one apology and that is on caps in the back. So we are voting to twenty-five this evening. Agenda item two, my movements and those of the vice-chair have been circulated. Obviously within this period of Perda and some of the other events were for fundraising, they have been very, very part of this particular round. And an absence from the leader, I'm advised that there are none and chief of health service. Agenda item four, declarations of interest, members. No, okay, that's fine, we move on. On the questions from members, we have a question from councillor Warr.
Thank you chairman. Cabinet was recently revised, there was now no longer a waiting list called CAMS, Charles Adolescent Mental Health Service. Can the portfolio holder please tell me the average and longest time lapse between CAMS accepting a referral and the young person's first appointment? How does CAMS manage emergency referrals and how does CAMS signpost support to other agencies if it deems a referral below its threshold?
Councillor.
Thank you very much councillor Warr. And actually quite tiny on members' way this week to answer a question like this, so thank you for that opportunity. And obviously actually no counts is in sort of the council director's commission, but I will do my best to answer your questions. The cabinets were revised on the eighteenth of April, the latest data from count was that the waiting times for children that we support were no longer than beyond three weeks. However, there was one exception to that for valid reasons. Further, it was highlighted that getting data on waiting times was not necessarily an easy process. Brooklyn County Council, as I said, doesn't actually commission this service, therefore we don't receive regular information on the provision and the timescales of children in the county. And this is similar to other health provisions that we don't, interventions that the County Council doesn't directly commission. That said, CAMs have informed us that the current average waiting time for all children is six weeks. Moving on to your second question around the management of emergency referrals. Casual referrals are classified in the following groups. The emergencies are within twenty-four hours referral to telephone or face-to-face assessment, those that are deemed urgent but in four weeks referral to telephone or face-to-face assessment, and a routine of thirteen weeks referral to telephone or face-to-face assessment. The actual referral process for emergency referrals is handled by the CAMs crisis team, which operates from eight o'clock in the morning until ten in the evening, Monday through Friday. Outside of that time, this is provided by the adult on-call team and emergency duty team when required. A telephone call in the emergency service is made within two hours and if required, a face-to-face assessment is offered. Telephone assessment confirms if a patient is suitable for the crisis team. If treatment is required, this is provided straight away, either through home treatment or inpatient services. Once completed, the patient is either discharged from care or stepped down to CAMs other services or to the early intervention services. As far as the signposting is concerned, CAMs can signpost professionals in their tier-two CAMs service that supports Brooklyn, and that operates a weekly confidential family therapy service operating from the Children's Centre. They also have available a professional advice line that's available daily to anybody working with young children who wish to discuss a case, and Brooklyn foster carers are often regular supervised sessions with a clinician. The CAMs service also works closely with other emotional wellbeing and mental health support for young people in Brooklyn, particularly within our early intervention services. Brooklyn has a specialist emotional health and wellbeing practitioner who sits within the health service as school nursing structure and who covers Melton and Brooklyn, and they work in our schools and with young people on a one-to-one or group basis to support emotional health and wellbeing issues. Brooklyn County Council Youth Service delivers targeted support to schools and community groups through their group work programme. Schools have specifically asked for support on self-esteem and emotional resilience with this team. Young people who want one-to-one support and would not meet thresholds for CAMs interventions, or those that have been set down from this CAMs service, are offered mentoring programmes or the whole family support through the Brooklyn County Council's early help targeted intervention practitioners. There is also a health commission service that is delivered, delivers online counselling and support called CUTH, and that offers one-to-one counselling and live and offline advice for us.
Thank you councillor. Councillor, do you have a supplementary?
I have two supplementarys, please.
I'm sure you can.
Thank you. The first is, I couldn't quite get all of that down, so could you reiterate it? Thank you. And the second supplementary is, once they've taken a referral, do you know how long it is before the person starts being supported on a regular basis, please?
I don't have that information, however, what I can do is actually take that away and ask again. As I said, we don't get the data directly, so that's something that I can ask the question and come back to.
Thank you.
Yes, I think we can include that in the actual long reply and give those details and go over there. So that's satisfactory, thank you. Agenda item six is the election of chairman of the council for the coming year, and I need to hand over to our chief of justice.
Thank you councillor. I'd like to invite nominations for the office of chairman of the council for the municipal year 2017/18, please.
I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate councillor Mathias.
That's okay. I think councillor heads and members are just beginning. Are there any nominations? In that case, we'll go straight to the votes, those in favour. Try to fall those against.
I don't watch it, that's amusing.
Those against.
That's amusing, thank you.
Okay, congratulations councillor Mathias.
Members, I think, as I believe we all acknowledge, it's personally a privilege to become councillor for this very special county. To be elected to the position of chairman for the council is indeed a great honour. It's very much, of course, within the gift of elected members, and I thank you for your confidence and support in my holding office for the coming year. As in the past two years, I shall work to represent and promote the county to the best of my ability in all aspects of the role. Thank you very much. We now move to agenda item seven, which is the election of the vice-chair, and can I call for nominations, please?
Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Mathias.
Can I have a second, councillor? Yes, councillor Foster has seconded. Are there any other nominations, please? No, so in that case we go straight to the vote, all those in favour. And that's, sorry, you're not voting yet, so there's a potential. Thank you, thank you very much, councillor Mathias. Congratulations, would you like to say a few words to councillor Mathias?
Very briefly, thank you very much, Chief Chairman, thank you members for your support. Twentieth anniversary of Brooklyn's return to independence. Don't get your pocket calculators out, but it's fifty years or more since I was first involved in Brooklyn affairs publicly, shall we say. I miss I was at school for the time, and I certainly feel it's an honour to represent the county in any way to ask you to do. Thank you very much indeed, chairman.
Thank you councillor, congratulations again. We now move therefore to agenda item eight, the executive leader scheme of delegation and cabinet procedure rules. It's report 108 to 107, it's pages three to twenty-two, and I'm going to ask Mrs Mark to present this particular paper. Although it's aged to note, I think we have discussed this, and what we will do, we will vote on this so that it confirms to the record, but I think Mrs Mark will take it through the procedure.
Thank you chairman. Councillors will be aware that it's under the strong lead of the model that this house operates. It sounds illegal for the council to choose its deputy leader and cabinet, but it's required to inform the council about the management of the cabinet for the coming year, so that's the third purpose of this report. The leader is also required to inform the council how decisions will be taken, whether they are taken collectively or through any delegations etc. So on page twenty-one of this report, you will see that this confirms that current practice is to be maintained and that all decisions will be taken collectively by the cabinet unless there will be delegations in place in this scheme of delegation. The third purpose of the report is to present the notes in the cabinet procedibles. These have been updated to ensure that they reflect current legislation, current practice, and need to be included in the council's constitution. They don't represent any changes to the powers that cabinet have, it's simply a tidy law exercise in terms of the new procedures of today. So I'm happy to take any questions that members may have, I'm seeking a proposal for the recommendations to be made.
I think we want to propose to councillor Mathias and to councillor Hensley, thank you. Members, are there any questions, please? Councillor Cross.
Thank you, Mrs Chair. I'm unsure as to how different these rules may be from the earlier ones, but under rule one five two, I'd like to just highlight, so permit every point of view to have a fair hearing. This is a very important point, and one that I believe in the past may have been missed out. Under procedure rule one five four, and obviously I'd love Mrs Mark to comment, to lead the achievement of best value in the delivery of services and the council's objectives. Again, lately, I do believe that best value seems to have been left out. To develop and maintain effective consultation with non-executive councillors, other portfolio holders, the community and stakeholders and partners. Well, there we are. I say very little on that one, because probably members around here, my hope...
Councillor, sorry to interrupt, but Mrs Mark has really confirmed that the points you are raising have not changed.
Oh, that's, well, that's even worse then, thank you very much. And under procedure rule one five six, the person presiding may invite a member or a member of the cabinet to speak. Well, for the cabinet meeting, three others sat there and were never invited to speak. Under procedure rule one five nine, reports about other matters will set out the details and outcome of consultation as appropriate. Well, I sincerely hope that when we want details of such consultations, they will be fully written down. Thank you, Mr Chair.
I'll ask just, Mrs Mark, thank you.
Thank you Chair. I've just responded to the point maybe about how much of the procedural change, none of the points that councillor Cross has just mentioned on you, they are as they were in the previous version of the procedures. Some of the elements about forward plan, they were based in terms of negotiation, so they are as they were.
Thank you very much for that confirmation.
Thank you councillor Cross. Are there any further questions, members? Okay, so what we are therefore doing, maybe saying note, we are actually inserting, if you like, approved, and are you intent that we will take the two items on block? Thank you. So therefore, item one, that we approve most of the cabinet portfolios allocated to cabinet members as shown in appendix A, is to note, okay, although it's to note, we are still going to take a vote on it, and therefore I will note that the cabinet procedure rules which incorporate the leader scheme of delegation in appendix B, agrees to its inclusion in the constitution, all those in favour.
No. I understand.
Okay, that's twenty-four in favour, any against?
Against, yes.
One against, so that completes twenty-five, so therefore no extensions, thank you very much. So that's the agenda item eight is dealt with. We therefore move to agenda item nine, the establishment of scrutiny panels, planning committees and scheme of delegation. It's report one oh three two oh one seven on your papers, it's pages five to forty-four, and particularly Mrs Mark, very busy this evening, I'm going to ask Mrs Mark to present this paper, thank you.
Thank you Chair. The council is required to review the establishment in terms of reference of scrutiny panels and committees at each annual meeting, and this year the opportunity has been taken to present a number of proposals in terms of changes to the council structure and some other changes to the constitution we working group have been considering in items also. There's quite a few changes, but I'll just move through them briefly. The first change is, a proposed change is around scrutiny panels. Section three of this report sets out the proposed changes in that there will be three scrutiny panels, growth, enforcers, children and people, and health, and it also changes the membership size of those panels, and that's detailed at three point one. Further to that, there are some proposals around the setup of our committees. The first one being the consolidation of the currently development control and licensing committee and the licensing act committee, in that they are brought together as one for planning and licensing committee, which will refer to all of our planning and licensing functions. There are some changes as well proposed in terms of delegations for planning, that's set out at four point three. The terms of reference to the planning and licensing committee have been revised and then reflects the proposed changes around enforcement powers and the delegations in consultation with the chair or vice-chair, and that's set out in appendix B. In line with the other meetings of the council, it's proposed that the planning and licensing committee start time is amended to seven pm, which as I say is the same as the other day of the meetings, so that's the closure of meetings procedural that needs to be amended. There's a proposal to amend the improvement of the boards committee terms of reference to incorporate the chief officer appointment panel, as set out at four point five. The audit committee terms of reference have been reviewed and are endorsed by the committee on the twenty-fifth of April. So those changes altogether present a revised council structure which is set out at section five of the board, which is total of fifty-one seats for council. There are then some other changes around closing meetings, which is to amend the closure time to nine thirty, plus the two fifteen minute extensions. A proposal to introduce a public speaking scheme for planning and licensing committee, and that's set out in appendix C for the board. That was considered with quite a lot of detail by the constitution review working group in terms of benefits that that would bring to the public in terms of clarity about what they can and can't do about planning and licensing committees and such questions. And as we are required to present each year, the scheme of delegation is also included in appendix B, so that includes all of the terms of reference from committees as amended and the opposite scheme of delegation. So I'm happy to take any questions that anyone's got, so there's a lot of changes to include there, but again, seeking a proposal is a good idea.
Just out of courtesy, are there anything you wish to add, councillor Mathias? No, I think, no, you're right, I'm going to go ahead. I am therefore seeking a proposal by councillor Mathias, seconded by councillor Hensley. Members, do we have questions, please? Councillor Cross.
Hi Chair, it's not questions, it's comments. We have it listed as the liaison committee, it's the liaison committee, it's specific to the link between the village and the state.
Is that a, I think that's a, we think that's a later agenda item, councillor, on item sixteen?
My fault.
So we can note that, councillor obviously, I'm just...
Yeah, I've hooked up the questions. First of all, I'm concerned that we are looking to, this council is looking to reduce the amount of time that can be given to the planning and licensing committee. The reason that I, as I understand it, it starts at six, is to make as many hours as possible to be devoted to the looking at planning applications. In the past, we've actually spent two hours looking at one planning application in order to do justice to that planning application. So I am disappointed to see that it's intended to reduce the amount of time that is devoted to planning and licensing committee. Presumably, we are run, we'll have to go to the next day in order to look at any planning applications which we weren't able to look at that evening. I'm also concerned about removing the opportunity for the planning and licensing committee to look at enforcement notices. Again, I think it's important that we are given the opportunity to debate enforcement notices, that is a very important role of that particular committee, and so for it to be removed, I believe is an erosion of the ability of this council to hold a job properly. I also have a question with regards to conduct committee, in that the committee is authorised on page twenty-four, nine point one A, the committee is authorised to promote and maintain high standards of conduct by members of the authority, and in the past, they've also looked at any complaints with regards to parish councillors and town councillors, so I'm just wondering whether that is going to be included in the parameters of the conduct committee in the future. Again, that's an important role. So I'll wait and see what, does it come off better, say?
Mrs Mark, thank you.
Thank you Chair. In terms of the, with the comments about the length of the time for the planning committee meeting, I think what we did talk about in the constitution review working group when that change was discussed, was that that was kept under review, and we see how that varies in terms of changes of meeting, the start time, and if it doesn't work, then something that we can reconsider and perhaps amend that day in the future. The point about enforcement, there's the same caveat around that as the role of planning applications in that the chair of the committee will be consulted, so there would be an option for something still to be presented to committee if that was felt necessary. And then finally, moving to the point about the conduct committee, those terms of reference haven't actually changed, and the conduct committee, or certainly my role as monitoring officer, is to look at conduct of this authority and parish and town councils, that's not changing these terms of reference. It's perhaps not as explicit as it could be in there, but that is my role and duty because as elected members within the county, so I hope that goes along.
Yes, councillor.
Okay, so we're waiting to see how it pans out over the next year. I would, I think it should conform to the actually, as far as the conduct committee, I think we need to perhaps amend that so it does include parish and town councils, so it's clear to the wider community that that is the role of the conduct committee. I don't know if it's possible to do that, it's just a case of ask question, because what we don't want to do is for somebody, if it does come to conduct and I say, well, according to the constitution, you're not supposed to be looking at this.
No. It is actually set out in legislation, so there isn't, there's no question showing whether it applies to town and parish councillors, but the committee is required to look at its terms of reference at the first meeting within any municipal year in any event, so that's something that I will write with the committee, will review the terms of reference overall to make sure that they're still relevant.
Thank you very much councillor Cross, that's very useful. I'll take councillor, sorry, I'll peel my cap to complete. Councillor, thank you. Councillor Mathias. Thank you Chair. I'd just like to ask, how it can be deemed to be in the interests of the public to restrict one person from the public to speak either for or against any planning application, and only for three minutes? How can a breadth of opinion be gauged if only one person is allowed to speak? Appendix C.
I think...
Councillor, sorry, Mrs Mark, you're going to be promoted for the rest of the week.
That is in line with the procedure that we follow, although it is presented slightly differently in these papers, and is in line with best practice that's followed in the authority, so we are, we did look at best practice in what has happened in labour and authorities when we considered this speaking scheme, but I'm not sure there's much else to say on that at this point, as I say, I don't think it represents a change to current practice.
Right, I'll go back to councillor Cross, and then I'll come do the other thing.
Thanks Chair, yes, first I'm speaking on this item. I'm sure that the constitutional review group does have the necessary authority to change what comes before the planning and licensing committee, and I wouldn't like to put in an amendment this time, but I would like it to recall that my support for the concerns voiced by councillor Rossley regarding removal of enforcement notice action from regular meetings. I appreciate that the opportunity's there for the committee chairman to be consulted, but I'll wait and see as councillor Rossley does, thank you.
Thank you councillor Cross, councillor Gill. First, just to point out, councillor Rossley referred to where the six o'clock starts, well, that's down to a previous councillor, Rob Toy, he had a lot of consideration for the officers sitting at that to him, that's the reason it starts at six o'clock. Going on again to what councillor Rossley said about any course, any reductions in the planning service, it's got to be a bad move, a wrong move. We say time and time again that every planning application is determined on its own merits, and every, to me, every planning meeting is a learning process, and for new members, there is so much learning planning. Legislation is continuing to change in planning, and I think any reductions to that meeting is a wrong move. Thank you. Thank you councillor Gill. Any further questions? Okay, well, members, I'm in your hands on this one, there are six items to vote on. We could do it on block or we can take them individually. Can you indicate if there's any strong reason why you want to take them individually? Okay, so it is preferred as by councillor Mathias, it is seconded by councillor Hensley, and we have the six items, I'm just reading the opening, to approve the scrutiny panels and standing committees, to approve the terms of reference for scrutiny panels, approves the terms of reference of standing committees etc., approves and proposed changes to closure meeting procedure rules as a section six, approves the revised public speaking scheme for planning and licensing, and authorises the monitoring officer to incorporate the provisions and changes above into the... and authorises the monitoring officer to incorporate the provisions and changes above into the council's constitution. Tis approved, sorry, tis approved and seconded, all those in favour?
Twenty-two.
Against? Record it please. And extensions? Thank you members, that concludes agenda item nine. We now move to agenda item ten, which is politically balanced, it's report one oh nine two one seven, pages forty-five and fifty. And this particular paper is where you also have this salmon sheet, which is the latest update sheet for this particular paper. And again, I'm going to ask Mrs Moll to take us through this particular paper. We will be voting on one, two, and then on item three, of course, we have some appointments to make. Mrs Moll.
Thank you Chair. So this report presents the latest political balance calculation of the council based on current membership when that's set out at paragraph two point three. As the previous decision that you just made approved the total allocation of fifty-one seats, then this report goes on to allocate those seats to political groups as set out at paragraph two point three. So the amended appendix one, this one that you've been presented with this evening, informs or shares, if you like, the wishes of the political groups in terms of which of their members they want to go on each planning committee. So that is the recommendation to approve the allocation of seats to political groups and note the membership on each committee. And then the third recommendation is for the non-aligned or un-greeped councillors to be allocated to the committees and panels. I've met with councillors Dale and Gale and their wishes are included on this paper. In that, the children and young people scrutiny panel is proposed that Mr Dale is on that committee. Planning and licensing, Mr Gale. Inform an appeals committee, Mr Dale, and conduct committee, Mr Gale. So in terms of the decisions, it's those appointments that need to be confirmed this evening. So I'll be looking for our proposal and seconding for the recommendations, please.
And I know councillor Mathias, so councillor Mathias is proposing seconded, councillor Hensley, thank you very much. So it is proposed, it is seconded, members, are there any particular questions? I think a lot of work has been done. Councillor Gale, thank you.
Thank you Chair. This is more an observation than anything. I think it's a sad day today, but we have now got, if it was a gambling casino, you would say that you've got a full house. The Conservative now rule every item that's there. And I just think that it's a shame that the independents and the different democrats haven't been given a little bit more to have a go at. We're all very keen to help and do what we can for Scotland and we've been stopped.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Gale. Yes, I'm sure with your grand service, your comments will be allowed to be. Councillor Gale, thank you.
Again, it's Justice David watching the line with councillor Dale. I don't think, in these very austere times, that we're doing the best for the public without a politicised council. We're not using the full resources of the whole council. This is why I'm voting against many things tonight, and not just being an awkward member. I really, really think that if we want to do the absolute best for the people of Scotland, we should drop politics. I know it's not going to happen, but that's what I really, really believe in. I honestly believe that politics, party politics in Scotland is not giving the best and very best service to the community of Scotland. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gale. Members, are there any other questions? Okay, well, it is proposed, it is seconded. Now, again, I'm in your hands, are you content that we will vote on the three items on block? Or is it more we should take them individually?
Individually.
Individually, I'm certainly happy to do that. So, we're going to vote. Item one, the council approves the revised political balance calculation as per paragraph two three of this report. All those in favour? Against? Record it please. Thank you, extensions? One, thank you. Number two, the council approves the allocation of seats to political groups, showing it in paragraph two four, and notes the membership of each committee as set out in appendix one. All those in favour?
Twenty-three Chair.
Against? Record it please, thank you. Two, thank you very much. Okay, so that matches that, item two is dealt with. Item three, the council appoints, and those are the ones that were read out by Mrs Moll, that council appoints non-aligned members to the seats on committees and scrutiny panels as set out on the council structure, which is your new salmon copy, just to be precise. All those in favour?
Twenty-three Chair.
Against? Abstentions? Record it please. Thank you. So, thank you, agenda item ten is actually dealt with. We now move on to agenda item eleven, the appointment of chairman of the scrutiny panels and the scrutiny commission for the year two thousand and seventeen. There is not a paper on this particular paper, agenda item number, so I'm having a look to the list. And we'll take each one one by one. And so we're looking for a nomination for the chair of adult and health. Councillor, we'll give perhaps a fast.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Stevenson for adults and health scrutiny panel, please.
Proposed and seconded by councillor Conde, are there any other nominations? Okay, then we can go straight to the vote, all those in favour?
Twenty-three Chair.
Against? Abstentions? Record it please. Two. Three. Sorry.
Three.
Beg your pardon, so twenty-two and three, thank you. Agenda, number two, the chair of children and young people.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Becky for children and young people scrutiny panel.
I'm looking for a second there. Councillor Foster, thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Thank you, then we will go straight to the vote, all those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Record it please. Twenty and five, thank you, okay. So we now go to number three, the chair of growth, infrastructure and resources.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to nominate councillor Lamy for the new growth, infrastructure and resources scrutiny panel.
Second there, I'll either or. Sorry, which one has your hand up there? Thank you, okay, seconded, and any other nominations? Seconded by councillor Waters, of course, any other nominations? No, okay, we go straight to the vote, all those in favour?
Twenty.
Twenty, and against? Abstentions?
Five.
Five, which makes twenty-five, thank you very much. So that's item, that's, oh yes. Now, the other item, the council has requested to appoint the chairman, of course, of the scrutiny commission, from one of the three chairmen from the scrutiny panels appointed above. So in accordance with provisions and rules one line two, that would automatically happen. I'm just looking to councillor Mathias again, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate councillor Lamy as chair of the scrutiny commission.
And the second there, shall I take, councillor Willby, I've ignored you so far this time. No, councillor Conde, okay, thank you, councillor Conde, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, then we can go straight to vote, all those in favour?
Twenty Chair.
Twenty, and against? None, and abstentions? Five, which completes the voting on that particular item. So that concludes, thank you, agenda item number eleven. We therefore now move to agenda item twelve, which is the appointment of members to the scrutiny panels. But naturally, that was dealt with through the new salmon paper that you had earlier when we actually voted on item ten, which is basically saying adults and health is children and people and infrastructure and resources six. So agenda item twelve is actually already covered. So we therefore move to agenda item thirteen, which is the chair and vice chairman of council committees. And I'm going to hand over to councillor Mathias, and I think we'll do those one by one as previously. And we're looking for an appointment of chair and vice chair for audit and risk, councillor Mathias.
Chair, just to clarify, do you want me to nominate both the chair and vice chair at the same time?
Yes, I think that's the easier way to do it.
In that case, thank you very much. For audit and risk committee, I would like to nominate Cao Wala as chair and James Lamy as vice chair.
I'm in the second there. I would get councillor Willby, thank you very much. So proposed and seconded, are there any other nominations? Thank you, if not, we go straight to vote, all those in favour of both appointments?
Twenty-three.
And against? Abstentions? Two, thank you, that's carried twenty-five. Councillor Mathias for conduct?
I'd like to nominate councillor Stewart and councillor Ball. Councillor Stewart as chair and councillor Ball as vice chair.
Thank you very much, are there any other nominations? I'm sorry, I need a second there. Councillor Hensley, thank you very much, are there any other nominations? No, we go straight to the vote, all those in favour? For both positions? Twenty-four, against? Abstentions?
Sorry, twenty-three.
Twenty-three and two, thank you, so that's that. And we now move to the planning and licensing committee, councillor Mathias.
Thank you Chair, I'd like to nominate councillor Baines as chair and councillor Stewart as vice chair.
Thank you, I'm in the second there, councillor Clifton, thank you. And my apologies, are there any other names, proposals? Thank you, if not, we go straight to the vote, all those in favour?
Twenty.
Twenty, and against? Abstentions?
Five.
Twenty-five, that's carried. And now we go to employment and appeals, councillor Mathias, thank you.
Thank you Chair, for employment and appeals committee, I'd like to nominate councillor Ball and councillor as chair and councillor Clifton as vice chair.
I'm in the second there, I'm looking at councillor Hensley, thank you very much. Are there any other proposals, members? Thank you, if not, therefore we can go straight to the vote, thank you, all those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Thank you, so that is dealt with. And now, the thing to note in this particular paper, of course, is that the chairman of the health and wellbeing board is the portfolio holder, and that is councillor Clifton. So that deals with agenda item thirteen, thank you. We now move to agenda item fourteen, which is the membership of council committees. Again, this is already been dealt with by the salmon paper that you had in front of you for four of the committees, which is audit and risk, conduct, planning and licensing, employment and appeals. However, under item B, on the health and wellbeing board, we need to elect a second member to join councillor Clifton. I'm looking to councillor Mathias for a proposal, or councillor Hensley?
I would like to propose councillor Mathias.
Okay, councillor Mathias can now have a second. Councillor Foster, thank you very much, are there any other names, members? Thank you, so therefore it is proposed, and the second is councillor Mathias, we go straight to the vote, all those in favour? Twenty-two, and against? Any abstentions? Which is three, that makes twenty-five, so agenda item fourteen is dealt with, thank you very much, members. We now move to agenda item fifteen, which is the programme of meetings, it's report number one oh six two oh one seven. There is a new salmon, again, copy before you this evening. We need to, I think I'm just looking to councillor Mathias, I would propose a second one. Proposed by councillor Mathias, seconded by councillor Hensley. I think there has been quite some work now on this, I don't think there are any particular questions. It's all proved by note, I think that the cabinet are going to try and have a very brief meeting on Boxing Day and I'm sure that will be dealt with very quickly. And they may have another one on New Year's Eve, but who knows? So just a little bit of fuel for tonight's meeting, sorry. So all those in favour, thank you. Janice, thank you very much. Agenda item sixteen is the appointment of outside organisations and the working groups, it's report one oh seven two oh one seven. It's pages fifty-nine to seventy-six. Again, councillor Mathias, I think you spent a number of hours on this particular paper. Am I right in thinking that we have one change to notify members on which is page two? I haven't thought of you.
Yes Chair, the same thing, as we saw on the appendix A, and it's a appointment of outside organisations by council. It's the joint health scrutiny panel. So we have two members on this, one is the chair of adult scrutiny. And the change is that councillor Waller will be the second member and not councillor Conde.
And other than that, members, I think that the outside bodies are big to your satisfaction as are the appointment to the, well, the deletion, which has gone through and that's all been dealt with. And in front of you on the paper, therefore, I do need a proposal, councillor Mathias, I'm having to propose that in the second there, councillor Hensley. And what you have before you enter the decision, recommendations, we need to take a vote on one, we need to note two, we need to note three, and we need to take the vote on item four. Now, it is proposed, it is seconded, are you happy that I take items one and four together? Or do you want to take them separately? Happy to take them together. So it's item one to vote on, approve the appointment of outside bodies, we're noting item two, we're noting item three, and we are approving the terms of reference to the constitutional review working group as set out in appendix C. Proposed and seconded, all those in favour, please?
Twenty-four Chair.
Twenty-four, against? Abstentions? One, twenty-five, so that particular item is carried. Therefore, members, that in good time, that takes me to agenda item seventeen, of which I have no appointed business. team, and appropriately also to the two ladies who look after this or less every council meeting, they do work incredibly hard. So with your permission, I would like to approve a very warm vote of thanks to Chief Executive, members of the team, and in particular, the two ladies on my right. And with that, members, thank you very much for your attendance, and very safe in any health, and I'm closing the meeting in seven thirty-eight. Thank you.